Good morning, everyone. And I would start the meeting out just a little bit differently today. Normally, we just do a quick call to action. But today is actually the first day that we will be doing live streaming for our actual commissioners' meeting. I am excited, but I also want to let the audience to know that the things that you say and do may be video recorded. I think by federal law, we have a requirement to let you know that. And I certainly also want to make sure that we have a sort of a clear understanding of how we're going to be able to move forward. I think, you know, as we move into this direction, we're going to have, you know, some things to work through. But ultimately, we want to ensure that we have a clear message about being open and transparent and ensuring that we have the ability to communicate openly with our public and the folks who we work for. The, I think, in my experience, I don't think government works well when we just rely on elected officials. I think the idea of engaging citizenry in a way that we make them a part of the solution, because it's not individuals that make things happen. It's really a combination of engagement within our community. And we have so many people here in Dauphin County that need to be served. The idea of trying to figure out a way to find partnerships, because when our community works together, there is no issues that we face that we can't resolve. And ultimately, that doesn't happen by just a few people. They say many hands make lighter work. And that the engagement of the community is critically important as we begin to talk about how we address stigma, how we address issues of mental illness, how we talk about, you know, investing in small businesses, how we try to figure out a way to do what's in the best interest of our economy. I also know that these decisions are never extraordinarily simple and easy. They take, you know, debate. And in today's world, people want to take positions on all sides. But assuredly, we have a responsibility to do not what's in the right or the left, but do what's in the best interest of all those who we represent within Dauphin County. I also think it's important, as I've knocked on doors over the years in county government and serving in a level of representing Pennsylvania on the national level. One of the things I always find interesting is when you knock on people's doors and you engage people, that they really don't understand a whole lot about county government. What is it the county government does? What are the functions of county government? It has so many levels that it impacts you on. And I think hopefully, this is going to be a real opportunity for education. The ability for us to be able to educate and to be able to engage the citizenry and also let them know, you know, and inspire them to become engaged and involved in providing solutions. Those are things that are really important. I mean, it's one thing to just point out problems. It's another thing to be able to actually be actively engaged in saying, hey, let's promote some ideas. I think the smartest people I know know they always have a whole lot to learn. And being able to ensure that we are open to those kind of ideas and better ways to solve problems, I think, is a great level of help as we begin to continue to work through significant challenges in an era where resources are tight. The expectations for services are at an all-time high. And we have to make difficult choices in a county, quite frankly, that represents rural, urban, and suburban communities. So we have it all. And the limited amount of resources and the ability for us to govern for all is critically important. I want to thank IT under the Leadership Commissioner Pries for being able to have us ready to roll today and hopefully being able to go through a live stream. And then, again, as we talk about these things, we may have to set some limitations as well, like a three-minute comment period. You know, the idea of figuring out how we take some of those comments that may be on Facebook and then ensure that we may have a summary similarly to what we do at the prison. If there are reoccurring themes that are existing out in the community, I think it's important for us to be able to gather those, that information and begin the ability for us to be able to communicate that, maybe in a summary format at the beginning of our meeting, so we're able to answer some of those challenging questions and some of those ones that may have consistent themes throughout the feedback from the public's perspective. So I just want to let everybody know we are going live today, and we are live today, live streaming. And we want to appreciate you being a part of the first time that Dauphin County has done that with our public meetings. And hopefully, this will provide accessibility to those individuals who are not able to participate in these meetings. So at this time, I'd like to call the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners workshop meeting to order for Wednesday, June 5th. And I'd like to start by a moment of silence followed by the pledge of the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So again, we promised we will do some education. This is actually a workshop meeting, which normally does not have a lined up of significant work to be able to actually vote on today. However, we do have matters to vote on. You'll find that there are some significant issues that we have a vacancy adjustment for, but we will sort of work through those issues because of the urgency of filling positions. You know, there's a whole load of things hopefully we'll be able to teach. And I'm going to try to take some opportunity during these meetings to communicate and educate as we, as we go through some of these processes folks may be familiar with or some may not, may have been viewing just for the first time. But next week, we will formally adopt the approval of minutes, which are for the May 22nd, 2024 workshop meeting, the May 29th, 2024 legislative meeting, and the May 29th, 2024 salary board meeting. So those will be all acted on next week. Executive sessions held between meetings, Mr. Pease?
Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, there were no executive sessions held between meetings.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pease? All right, our first order of business are directors and guests. Dauphin County Conservation District Matthew Whirl and Robert Kristoff are here today for a check presentation. I know we've met Mr. Hens in the beginning of the meeting. We want to thank you for being here today and participating in the program. And we'd like to call up Mr. Kristoff for a presentation.
Good morning.
And Jimmy, you may come to the desk as well.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning's check presentation is for the purchase of an agricultural conservation easement. You mentioned Mr. Hens is here to receive that check. Jim owns a 120-acre farm in Halifax Township that he put into the program. I did want to note, I was just looking through his file. His original application came to us in 1996. So he's been waiting for quite a while to have the opportunity to get in the program. So I thank for his patience on that. With the purchase of the easement, Dauphin County is going to have over 20,400 acres of preserved farmland. Some of you may remember last, I think it was August, we did the 20,000 acre in South Hanover Township. Halifax Township will be approaching 1,500 acres to preserve. So if you have any questions on the program or what's going on today, be happy to answer.
Yeah, I'd like to hear about this specific project. And I know in speaking to Mr. Hens, just before the meeting, we talked about his interest in trying to be a participant in the program for a couple of years and the availability of resources and the ability for him to qualify. Can you sort of walk us through that a little bit?
Sure, sure. You know, going back historically through the program, there was a time when we had as many as 71 applications on file. And we, you know, typically, we're getting six to eight farms in every year. So we would get some in, more would come in. So the way the program works is you're given a score based on a scoring system. And, you know, you can go right to the top of the list, right to the bottom, or anywhere in between. So it's not a strict waiting list. When Mr. Hen supplied, we had a lot of applicants. And there were several applicants in recent years that had waited for 20-plus years to get in the program. So Jim's farm is just a little south of Halifax Borough along the river. And last year, 2023, I believe it was, that his application, you know, finally made it through to the top of the list or near the top of the list that we could preserve.
So I made the point in the beginning of the meeting related to our rural, our urban and suburban, you know, distinctions within Dauphin County. And one of the things we know is God doesn't make more grain earth. And the ability for us to be able to preserve some of these farms will ensure that we've got the level of historic, you know, open space and agriculture, which has made this county strong and is obviously one of the leading industries related to both the economy in this region as well as, you know, family farms and how we need to preserve that level of agriculture. But related to the resources, and obviously, you'd fund them all if you could, but we have both state and county funds that are used in this mix. Tell us about, just quickly, again, for those of you in the audience, please bear with me. I think we're going to try to educate a little bit on some of these issues. But tell us about where those resources come from, how they're derived, and sort of the availability of how we are able to then make determinations on priorities.
Right, sure. The bulk of our funding does come from the state funds. And every year, we get a certain amount that is given to us as more or less a grant. And that is the bulk of the funding. And then we also have state funds that come to us as a match. That matches for the county funding that's provided. The commissioners have been providing funding for this program for probably 30 years, 25, 30 years. So that money then gets matched. So we have those two pots to pull from. The state funds, if we don't use them, they do go away after two years. Now, we haven't ever lost any state funds. The county funds, they, you know, if we don't use those, those by law have to stay available for the program. So you can keep an eye on sort of the funding and, you know, make sure that you're using up your state funds because they can lapse as quickly as you can. This particular easement is 100% county funded. Do you want any more information?
No, I think it's important because, you know, the financial pieces to running county government are extraordinarily complex. And each area of oversight has significant differences related to how you put up local share monies or local tax dollars in order to leverage state and federal dollars. In some cases, you can put up the share, but may not have to spend it. In this case, you have to put up the share and it remains in the pot for our ability to be able to continue to do land preservation. And ultimately, when it's matched by state funds, we will not return those dollars. But we also want to make sure that as we build up those county reserves that we are affording folks like Mr. Hens the opportunity to do it even without a state match.
Right, right. And I will mention that over the years, there has been, I think, a little over a million dollars of federal funding that's coming to the program as well, that we have to seek, that we have to apply for that. And that, of course, obviously enables more participants to participate in the program. Approximately, you know, additional 10 farms are able to be in the program because of the federal funding.
So Mr. Hens, you're the star of the hour. Can you tell us a little bit about your farm?
Well, as Bob mentioned, it's 120 acres right along the river. And it's just outside of Halifax. And it's about 80 acres tillable. The rest is wooded and, again, along the river. And it's a nice vista. And it's a place I've really enjoyed spending time. It's not a family farm. I bought it back in my early, early 30s. I've had it for quite some time. Tried to get in the program because I think it's a great program. And to preserve it for the future is something special, really.
We appreciate your willingness to center the program and make sure that the scenic vistas you enjoy can be enjoyed by county residents for future years to come. So finally, just one piece that I'm going to open up to my commissioners. What would happen if, you know, there was a sale? And I think this is important to play through. If there was an interest in buying the property, what would happen to those dollars that would be invested upfront from the county share? If folks wanted to remove it from the conservation requirement?
Yeah, it can't be removed from the program under state law. It is a perpetual easement.
Got it. I just want to make sure that's clear. All right, any, first of all, Commissioner Douglas, do you have any questions?
So I grew up on a farm. So, and forage all through my childhood. Grew up in Indiana, the state of Indiana. And so both sides of, you know, raising animals and living all around cornfields and seeing the impact that that has. And then I lived in downtown Boston for a while. And, and, you know, like, like is being said here, you know, ag land preservation really matters, especially in a space like this where it is so, so much part of central Pennsylvania and certainly Dauphin County. I believe it's still our number one economic engine here in the county, correct? I believe agriculture.
Followed second by tourism.
Yeah, so, so obviously the economic impact, but then also just the, you know, farmers are proud. You know what I mean? That's one thing I learned growing up. And they're proud of their heritage, where they come from, the hard work. And, and certainly being able to look out your back door and kind of see land. And I remember that growing up, right off the back porch, be able to see. We had about 12 acres that was fenced in with, you know, we had a sheep farm. And we had all kinds of other animals too. But I just say, say thank you for, first of all, this program. I think this program and the investment we have in preserving ag land here. Obviously, we see all the need for warehouses and distribution and all that. Obviously, we see all the need for warehouses and distribution and all that happening. And it's good to know that we're not just, you know, handing over some of these precious properties that, you know, have such a great heritage. So thank you for your willingness to even preserve it as well. And I'm thankful for this program.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Breeze?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to say thank you as well. I echo my colleagues' comments. This is a historic moment in Dolphin County as this is our first ever livestreamed meeting, which all the residents will be able to watch into perpetuity. And this was the first agenda item on that first ever historic meetings livestream. So congratulations to you. Thank you for all that you have done and are doing on behalf of the residents of the county. A pet peeve of mine has always been when there's land out there, precious land, and the developer comes and tears down the trees and and paves the grass to put a Walmart or something up literally several hundred yards from a vacant building. That's occurred way too many times. What you're doing today puts this land into perpetuity, which it will never be touched and will be used as it is now forever. So we can't thank you enough for doing that. I also want to give a shout out to Chairman Hartwick for appointing me, as a segue into what we were just talking about, appointing me at the beginning of the year as Oversight of Information Technology. And I knew that it was the wish of the board to livestream our future meetings, which we are now doing today. But that could not have been done without Liz Perry and the great team in information technology getting us to this point. Everything we do as county employees, from the time we come in and open up the garage door to turning on our computer, to looking at our emails, everything is tied into information technology. And I think that we need to stress that as well, that we couldn't have done this without Liz Perry and her tremendous team at IT.
Thank you, Commissioner Breeze. Is there any additional comments? I think the time has come for us. This talking has been great, but they want the check.
I just did I just did one comment. There's a neat old log house on this farm that was built in 1801. And I'm in the process of restoring that. So it's sort of a combination, preserve the farm as well as the old the old log house, which is pretty cool.
So you're going to have us up when it's restored?
Pardon me?
We're going to have it. You're going to have all the Commissioners up when it's restored?
Of course, of course, big party.
We're now on livestream, so we got you on camera to be able to. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. And now we have the other really exciting discussion about MS4 regulations and an update on the municipal stormwater system, which, for those of you who know, each, you know, there's a variant variance of ways that local municipalities charge for the stormwater MS4 requirements that have been promulgated and passed down by the federal government. There's an update on the municipal storm sewer system and the MS4 regulations that are being sort of governed by the Conservation District and trying to figure out a way to offer to to residents. So Bob?
Okay. Yeah, you're right, Commissioner. This will probably be the most exciting part of every Wednesday this year. So Dolphin County is subject to what's called an MS4 Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit. That's an NPDS National Pollute Discharge Elimination System Program. That's a federal program run by EPA and Commonwealth. It's administered by DEP. That permit then comes into various municipalities, counties, other quasi-government entities. So we've been regulated.
Can I just ask you to expel? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this is all an attempt to try to reduce sediment and pollution that go into the Chesapeake Bay region.
Discharge through separate storm sewers. Right?
Yep.
So these are separate storm sewer systems, combined systems that or sanitary systems are not regulated. They can be regulated under separate programs. So the county's been subject to this permit and the requirement since 2003. There's six elements, public education, public participation, illicit discharge elimination, construction site stormwater management, that's the erosion sediment control, post-construction stormwater management, and pollution prevention and good housekeeping in municipal facilities. So the county needs to develop and has developed a program that addresses various tasks under each of the six elements. Back in 2003, County Commissioners designated Conservation District as the entity, the agency in the county to ensure permit compliance. So the purpose of this presentation is, one, summarize for the Commissioners and keep you up to date on, you know, what we're doing, what we did last year, what we anticipate next year. Also provide pop, uh, public opportunity for input and meet permit requirements. So with that, the 2022, 2023 program year, the permit year that runs from June, I'm sorry, July 1 through June 30. So we're coming up on the end of that year. All but a handful of requirements have been met. There's nothing unusual about last year to to bring up. I will mention that, you know, under the public education minimum control measure, we do partner with some of the local municipalities on some of the public education elements. For example, on an annual basis, we place a newspaper ad in in the local paper in in conjunction with all the the other regulated municipalities that want to participate in that. The Conservation District distributes educational materials to all the public and private schools in the regulated area, which in essence is the entire Dolphin County, south of Blue Mountain, all the municipalities in there, pretty much all regulated, with the exception of a couple. Last year, we also did five homeowner stormwater management workshops with five different, actually six different municipalities, where folks in those municipalities come out and they learn about ways they can handle and better manage stormwater on their properties. And then they all receive free rain barrel. That rain barrel is is purchased through Conservation District Funds and State Education Grant Funds. And municipalities also put in funds for that. So that was London Dairy, Sesquahana, West Hanover, Swatera Township, and Paxton and Penborough all participated last year. The other thing I'd mention is the public participation element, the public involvement. That's a little difficult for us because of the nature of some of our facilities. You really can't have public involved, for example, on a stream cleanup or a project inside the prison, you know, the the security purposes and things like that. So one of the things that happens is Wildwood Park, they do a volunteer day, you know, once a month, you know, during certain times of the year, you know, weather pending, of course. And that that helps us comply with that with that element. So we appreciate folks there at Wildwood Park for for doing that and helping to meet that permit requirement. Third element, illicit discharge detection and elimination. That is a measure to try to keep pollutants out of the sewer storm sewers to start with, illicit discharges, things like that. And illicit discharge is defined as a direct or indirect, non-stormwater discharge to the county storm sewer system, except that certain exemptions that are in the county ordinance. So the efforts there, you know, we've distributed educational materials to all the facilities. We've given them a sort of a sheet that they can post on, a bulletin board that has illicit discharge information and numbers to call if they if they see an illicit discharge. And that is one of the the outreach and education, the illicit discharge information is one of the important elements of that. Construction site stormwater management, Conservation District administers the Chapter 102 NPDS permitting for construction. That's basically controlling erosion and sediment, you know, keep it from reaching the streams, in this case through storm sewer systems or directly. That program, you know, we've done that, you know, long before MS4 occurred. I mean, it was a statewide program even before the NPDS permit came along. So we do that, we do that under also a memorandum of understanding with all the other regulated municipalities. And that program then meets all their requirements for that particular item. Similarly, with the post-constructions, stormwater management, certain elements that are in that program, the the Chapter 102 program, help to meet those program requirements for all the municipalities in the county. Pollution prevention and good housekeeping, that's basically, we're looking at the county facilities that are regulated and there is a pollution prevention, good housekeeping plan developed for each of them. They have that on site. And those are ways that they can go about their business on a daily basis and try to prevent pollution. Right now, we have 14 regulated municipalities, regulated facilities, ranging from, you know, the prison has the largest system, you know, a whole bunch of inlets and four outfalls, all the way down to like a small district justice office that may have one outfall. But they all have these plans prepared. We do an annual training for all the folks as well. A lot of that has become electronic distribution of training materials. So those get distributed on an annual basis. Everybody gets that. And then we also do storm sewer system inspections. We used to do those twice a year, but our systems are generally kind of static. There's not a whole lot going on with them. So we reduced that starting last year to one time per year. What we see in the future, we don't see anything different coming up. The the permit actually expired in 2023, but has been sort of administratively extended. So we're just kind of doing the same thing we've done under the old permit until they develop a new permit. And then if there are new requirements, of course, we'd have to meet those. But at this point, we're just kind of status quo. We are planning and actually we've received a grant to do six more rain barrel workshops. So we're we're in line with Dairy, London Dairy, Lower Paxton, Lower Swatera, South Hanover, and Swatera Township, Paxton Borough to do these rain barrel, we call them workshops, they're homeowner education workshops. And that's about it. Public input. If anybody has any questions, any input, suggestions, ideas, we welcome those. They can contact me at the Conservation District, 717-921-8100, rkrstoff@dolphincounty.gov. We'd be happy to, you know, discuss a program or hear any input from any citizens. And if folks have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Just, we we don't expect any issues of noncompliance. You're saying this is sort of the summary of the 2022, 2023 report as we are going to submit them, anything out of out of the ordinary that we should be made aware of related to this that submission?
That's 2023, 2024 permit year. And no, there is nothing unusual to report. Nothing that you guys need to be aware of at this point.
And so if we see somebody, and I'm just going to make this sort of practical, if we see somebody putting antifreeze down the sewer drain in our local community or in our neighborhood, what should we do?
You should contact your municipality. Every municipality except a couple south of Blue Mountain is regulated MS4. They have the same requirements we do. They all have the same, in relation to your example, they will all have an illicit discharge ordinance that prohibits those things.
So they're governed by local ordinance and you'd contact your local municipality?
And they should follow up on that.
And you'd be notified?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Because if if it's in your local township, let's say you live in Swatera Township, you call Swatera, they're going to follow up on that under their regulations and their permit and their ordinance. Now, if if you work at one of these regulated facilities in Dolphin County, you would contact us. We'll follow up on it. And the fact that even if you work at a facility that's not regulated in Dolphin County, you know, and something like that happens, contact us. And these illicit discharges aren't necessarily people intentionally pouring, you know, something.
Maybe it'd be a bad example, but I just wanted to make it practical for folks.
That's a good example, but it could be as subtle as, you know, somebody that has spread something on their lawn, what what have you, they don't pick up their dog wings. If that gets washed off into the storm sewer, that could be considered illicit discharge.
You may get a lot of business, Mr. Kristoff.
Well.
All right. Any questions from the other Commissioners, from Mr. Kristoff?
I just want to say thank you for your professionalism over the years. And I've heard a lot of great feedback from our municipalities when you contacted them, working on these regulations. So great job.
Thank you.
Hearing no more questions. Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Appreciate your presentation today.
Take care.
All right, now comes the time in the agenda for the first opportunity for public participation on agenda items only. Is there any public participation on agenda items only today? Seeing none, Salary Board, Mr. Morgan. I believe Fay is on vacation. Good morning.
There are no changes to the packets that were sent out yesterday by Fay. If you do not have any questions, we will be asking for a vote on one Salary Board item and some personnel packet items this week.
Okay, what is the Salary Board items? Because we need to take these.
Number 13. That is a transaction with the prison.
So I have 13 on Salary Board. And then from what I understand, we'll we'll take that up first. And then we'll do the personnel packet, but we've got several of those items as well. Do I have a motion on item number 13 on the Salary Board packet today? So move by Controller Bateman. And again, I usually do this before Salary Board. But the Salary Board consists of the three Commissioners and the Controller. In the case, that it would involve independently elected officials. It involves those independently elected officials from those row offices. Or if it involves the court, it would also involve the president judge. So that would constitute our Salary Board requirements. So we have a motion made by Controller Bateman, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Do we have any discussion? Hearing not all, those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Personnel packet?
Yes, for the personnel packet, we would ask that items 1 through 5, 18 through 21, and 28 through 40 be voted on today.
Okay. Do I have a motion to move items 1 through 5, 18 through 21, and 28 through 40 on the personnel packet today?
So so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Douglas. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I would second that motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Breeze. Is there any discussion?
I just want to make it clear for the public that the reason these are being pulled out and voted on in a workshop meeting is just to simply expedite our prison hires. It's a long process for a CO to wait to get hired through a process of background checks and drug tests, all kinds of other things. And we've lost a lot of correction officers in that process of going through that, just meaning that as you're waiting to get a job, you get lost in that process. We're trying our best to expedite it. And this is one of the ways in which we're expediting getting our correction officers hired expediently.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you.
All right, Director of Budget and Finance, Mr. Davis, welcome.
Good morning. I think Bob and I are going to have to agree to disagree because I think this is the most exciting part of the meeting.
I think the interest rates you're getting are exciting.
Well, I got some fun news for you on this.
Not the deficit we face.
So just to get it out of the way first, the purchase order packet, there are no changes to what was distributed yesterday. So that'll be ready for your vote and approval next week. And then for the 24, 25 proposed budget summary, since this is the first livestream Commissioners meeting, this is also, as I mentioned before, the first entirely digital submitted budget in Dolphin County. So we were able to do that entirely through Oracle, with the exception of me printing this for public display. So I am very proud of that. And thank you to all our service agencies that and their patience through this process. But to give you the summary, the proposed 24, 25 budget shows an increase of 14.4 million or 13.58%. Of that, the county funds in the proposed budget are only up 1.3 million or 10.17%. And on the second page of the summary that was submitted, you'll see, just based on revenue, majority of what we're funded by comes from the state, second to the feds. And the majority of the expenses you can see go to client care services, which is, you know, basically anything to the residents or people seeking, you know, those services. We do not need to vote on this today. I just need a general nod to go forth and put it on public display. A copy of this, this has been done in past years, will be, this hard copy will be in the lobby for the public. A PDF version will be on the website. It'll be up for 21 days and it will be voted on at the workshop after Juneteenth. I apologize, I didn't write down the date.
We will certainly make sure we make note of the actual date and make sure that's included online. Just wanted to. We, we will certainly make sure we make note of the actual date and make sure that's included online. Just wanted to thank staff. I know it was up to about one thirty last night. Going through hundreds of contracts related to this budget proposal. We've got tight fiscal controls on what we're attempting to try to do. And I see a pattern where the actual future of providing these services are unsustainable. There are significant challenges with increased costs and not a reflective amount of increase in the level of state funding that's supposed to be there to support it. We know that it's getting more and more expensive to continue to do business. But I want to commend first of all our staff. I don't know of a better fiscal team that we have than anywhere in the state. We're actually one of the areas that folks would contact related to both, you know, federal as well as state compliance, the ability for us to draw down money. I think this year we've leveraged in about another million dollars to draw down additional eighteen million in federal and state funds just in our child welfare system alone. And we've done it all real with, really without a significant exposure to taxpayers. And that doesn't happen by managing it during the budget process. It happens by any changes, amendments, or challenges to the fiscal areas of those contracts to be able to be managed. There are several concerns related to this budget. Mental health is severely underfunded. It is the most underfunded system that we have and has the highest amount of need. We are exploring new ways through our behavioral health managed care companies to draw down dollars to ensure that we're investing in things like drop-in centers and innovative ways for us to make an investment that never happened post-state hospital closure. But we need help. We need a partner that's going to be understanding of where we're at. If we do not receive a level of increase next year, I know the twenty million dollars that's proposed, we are grateful for in the governor's budget, but we will be forced to cut services. I want to say it today. We will be forced to cut services. One of the things I'm proud of, being a county commissioner is we solve problems and we avoid significant crisis because we care about the people that we, we serve. But ultimately, I don't want a tragedy or continued deaths to occur because of an underfunded system that is woefully inadequate to deal with the amount of need that we have. Dolphin County Prison is not a place to provide mental health services. I'm going to tell this again. Dolphin County Prison is not the place where we should be providing mental health services. We have been promised access to those services within the community with the closure of the state hospital, and by then we should be able to have a partner that fulfills that level of a commitment. And unfortunately, our institutions and emergency rooms are filled up with individuals who are seeking out help where there is no alternatives. And even if we divert through this new drop-in center, we have issues of housing, access to support, personnel issues, and even community-based levels of services that have waiting lists that don't allow for people to be able to be served when they are in crisis. You're going to tell somebody they're going to be a month till they're going to be seen when they're just getting out of a rehab for potentially threatening suicide or, or being in a position to be three oh two. We've got to do better, folks. We've got to do better for our population, and we've got to do better as a system, and we need partners to do that. This is not a county responsibility from a funding perspective. We administer in our state. We are a county administered state oversight system. And we should be having that, those funding partners be, be at the table as we begin to, to share in these solutions together. There's other problems that exist in our child serving systems, and I want to be clear with this. I mean, this is a, a challenge. We have no place to send kids for juvenile detention. We have limited opportunities to do community protection, and we are trying to reduce the reliance on those formal systems to be able to engage folks in the community. But we have got to have the resources to both protect this community and serve the kids and families within our community. And quite frankly, those are woefully inadequate and the, the contract process to be able to get it rates are becoming a wild west. Quite frankly, we need to ensure that we've got partners as we manage through this process. But there's a lot of concerns in this budget. Again, additional amount of money that we put down to leverage additional resources, we are hoping not to spend that county share as we come and, and reallocate and use those dollars as the last resort. But it couldn't happen without a dedicated fiscal staff, a team that cares extraordinarily deeply about the people that we serve. We only see the bad stories about something that has been missed or a child that has tragically been involved in an incident. And, and ultimately, I will tell you this, on behalf of our employees, we have incredible employees who sacrifice daily both from their own ability to, to gain resources, to be able to do what's in the best interest of our seniors, our children, and our family, and those who are struggling in this community. I don't know where government employees became bad people, but ultimately, I know the people that work for this county I'm damn proud of that are good people, that are making a difference every day. And we are truly grateful for their level of service that they continue to provide here in Dolphin County. So while we anticipate accepting this budget with limited exposure to County General Fund, I note a series of really, really significant concerns that plague us as we move forward. And again, we need solutions, not more promises, and the ability to work together with a partner that's serious in being able to provide the resources necessary to do this job. Commissioners, do you have any additional comments?
Well, first, I think June twenty-sixth is, is when you're going to be bringing this for approval. That would be the, the Wednesday following Juneteenth. I echo the chairman's remarks on the prison not being a place in which residents of Dolphin County should be receiving mental health care. The setting matters when you're administering mental health aid, and the setting of a prison is not a setting where people are going to get better. And not to mention the cost to that, the, the cost effectiveness of that is just not conducive for us actually solving the problem. So I agree, we need to, we need to procure partners who are willing to, you know, help in that, and certainly the state and, and the federal government. I would love to see become larger partners in that. Thank you for all your time on this. I know you've put a lot of time in, into this, as we talked about it the other day. It's, it's a lot of work for you and your team. So thank you for your team, and I look forward to in three weeks, coming together and passing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pries? Certainly. Again, I echo my colleague's comments. Mr. Davis, could you let the public know, we've, we've talked about this budget, but this isn't the budget. We have two budgets during the year. Could you, could you give a description of what this one is, is being described today, and then what the one is at the end of the year? Yeah, so this is what we, you'll hear me call our fiscal budget, which is essentially our human service agencies, the Area Agency on Aging, Children and Youth, Drug and Alcohol, MHADP, the Human Services Development Fund, or Hazmat Team, and the adult probation supervision fees. This budget runs July first through June thirtieth of the following year. It matches up the state fiscal year. The other budget is what we call the calendar year budget. So that is the county's general fund and a few others that line up with that, like hotel tax, affordable housing. And that runs, as the name implies, January first through December thirty-first of that calendar year. So that process will begin here for me in about a week.
It started in January.
Yes. So that is the other one, and I don't want to say the bigger one, but that's the one where the real estate taxes are recorded and budgeted for, so.
And, and likely, if we were not managing this budget, you know, would have even more of a detrimental effect despite our local share match and the requirements of funding. Those costs continue to roll downhill and be forced to county taxpayers to provide services that we're mandated to provide, and we do it on behalf of the state. So clearly, you know, we don't want to give the services back, but continuing to have those costs be borne out by local taxpayers who are not in the position to fund these services by law are, are a critical part of how we try to manage these budgets. So thank you. And, and I think that explanation is important. I, I think we wonder why we're doing two budgets. It's not because there's any kind of cynicism required to by law, and those are the areas that are covered. So appreciate it. Any additional questions for Mr. Davis? Thank you again for your hard work. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. So Listeners' Report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. Items one and two, under matters requiring board action, have been vetted and reviewed by the solicitors' office and are appropriately before the board for action.
Any questions for Mr. Owens on today's action items? Or on the Solicitors' Report? Hearing none. Mr. Pries?
Commissioners, I have nothing to report unless there's questions of me.
Any questions for Mr. Pries? Hearing none. Training packet, I believe we have items one through four that need action today. I would entertain a motion at this point to, to move on items one through four on the training packet.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for approval of items one through four listed on the training packet for approval.
Motion made by Commissioner Pries. Do we have a second? Second made by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Okay, on matters requiring board action today, we've got items one, two, one and two, that we, we will need to move on. And then we've got something under former business. And if I could, just take the liberty to, to make an adjustment or a suggestion today. I know Resolution Ten talks about submission of amending action plans for multiple years. I think it's really important that we don't lose any resources because of some pending challenges that we have that, that, that have to be addressed related to former investments that were put on hold by the Housing and Urban Development Department. But instead of moving on all these items today, I think, you know, we are at stake in, in the position to lose potentially the twenty sixteen year as it relates to the amount of money that could be at stake, and I believe that's in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. From my perspective, until we were able to define a much better plan related to our community health, housing development organizations, and figure out a way to have the maximum amount of impact on both development, I would entertain a motion, obviously from the, the board, to be able to authorize the submission for twenty sixteen and take up those additional years as we develop housing plans moving forward. Do I have a motion to that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made.
Just to be clear, the amount is nineteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars to be exact.
And it was roughly around twenty thousand. Nineteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight?
Yep. So we're, we're, we're keeping the resolution as is from what I understand, but then just eliminating twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, right? We're, we're just maintaining twenty sixteen monies which are about to expire if we don't use them.
We are ensuring there's no money returned to HUD based upon their own legal objections.
Yep. So I'm in favor of that, yes.
Got it. All right, we have a motion made. And, and do you want to cover that also for, you want to include item two in that as well? So we can do one motion, or you want to take them separate?
Like, we can include item two.
All right. So if, if we could, the motion will reflect twenty sixteen authorizing the submission of an amended action plan only to include that year in the ratification of the agreement with the Aquatic Resource Restoration Company and the addendum for the Detweiler Park Dam. That motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Former business is the appointment of Jim Fisher to the Conservation District Board. Mr. Fisher's term will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Fisher to the Conservation District Board?
So moved.
Motion has been made.
One moment. Can, can I hear from our?
Sorry, yeah, I wanted to butt in here. So I had connected with Eric Naguski from the Conservation District. We had, and we were actually working with the state board as well. We have a few items that we need to clean up and submit the proper paperwork for. So I would just ask if the board could table this for one more week so we get that all sorted out.
And I, I didn't want to interrupt your, it seemed like I just wanted to follow rules of order. We should have probably motion seconded and had discussion, and then we could probably not have that motion. So just want to make sure we're following the appropriate rules of order governing the meeting. So the motion's been made.
I'll second.
Second. All right, now discussion. We've heard the discussion, and if, if that's the case, would you like to make a friendly amendment to table this until the following meeting? Commissioner Pries?
Yes.
Friendly amendment has been made to table this until the following meeting. It has been seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of tabling this appointment until future, for future consideration indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. All right, Commissioner's comments? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, yesterday I had the opportunity to be with Governor Shapiro and Secretary Buttigieg at Cleveland Cliffs and Steelton. You know, American-made steel from Steelton is being used in subways, street cars, rail cars, naval vessels, high quality, provides a much safer product for our communities. The community impact, the jobs that are created, the better wages, the potential for workers to own homes and opportunities that, that exist for families. I'm just really thankful to President Biden and all those who championed the bipartisan infrastructure deal. It's clear the impact it's having on our country, on Pennsylvania, and right here in Dolphin County in our backyard. It's amazing. As my colleagues have already mentioned, I'm thankful for IT today, for live streaming. It's something that I believe is really important for the accessibility for our constituents to be able to view our meetings. And certainly, as already been mentioned today, the educational component and the transparency and accountability. And I'm, I'm thankful that today we're having that first ever experience for constituents to livestream.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. Commissioner Pries? I'm going to just take the liberty real quick. Yesterday, you know, really gave me another picture of the men and women who are at home as single parents dealing with children who are involved in a career or job. I had a sick son yesterday who, you know, has been struggling with some ENT issues and high fever, and I know the amount of multitude of events we had yesterday and calls that I had to receive and entertain and continue to conduct business. I had to have my mom come over for a couple of hours to return a couple of calls. But I, I just want to say to those parents who are out there, you have the toughest job in the world. The idea of being there for your children day in and day out, and, and then trying to balance a career and a job is an extraordinary feat, and you should be commended every day. Your, your job is extraordinarily difficult. I want to thank Shelby. She, she was out of town yesterday for a, a presentation that she had for work because we have multiple working folks within our household, and the ability to actually manage that and be there in an attentive way for your child is nothing more important you can do. But I want to thank staff for being able to adjust the times, schedules, and everything. And it killed me not to be at my hometown and the steel mill yesterday to welcome Secretary Buttigieg. But, well, yeah, he, he, his, his fever prohibited me from doing that, but ultimately, I, I think our staff has been under a great deal of stress lately. They, you know, the idea of our team that has committed to working through challenges and changes and all the things that have been thrown at them, they, they really deserve a great deal of credit. It's not easy. Change is not easy, and the ability to manage and continue to keep the buses going on time and the level of work that is extremely important for county government, we cannot divert from. And we have some committed folks here who deserve the level of credit every day who are here for the right reasons. They continue to do incredible work to be able to, to serve the residents of our county. And I just want to say thank you, and with the parents that are home that are watching today, I'm glad we're able to bring you live stream, but you're thought of today too. And that recent experience lets me know exactly how difficult your job is. At, at this point, I'd like to ask for public participation from anybody in the audience. Is there anybody that wants to participate in the meeting? Yes. Hey, good morning. Could, could you come up front? State your name and address, please. But we, we all know who you are.
Good morning. My name is Evelyn Hunt. I live at eighteen thirty-three State Street. I've lived there since nineteen sixty-two, and I'm not going anywhere.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
I, I came here today to invite the county commissioners to an event that's going to be held on July twenty-third. In nineteen ninety-nine, a quilt guild was established in Middletown, the Peacemakers Quilt Guild. And it has been very active in community services throughout the twenty-five years that we've been in existence. We started off in our beginning year making quilts, also making beds for children in the foster care system. And right now, we're still involved with that as well as making comfort quilts or lap quilts for the people in the Spring Creek. On this month, we're going to have another special event. We're going to be giving the Middletown Police twentys. They don't know this.
Well, they do now.
They.
If you were trying to keep it a secret, Ms. Hunt, the cat is out of the bag.
They think they're only going to be getting twenty-five quilts, but we have been able to collect seventy-five quilts. And these quilts will be given to the police and put at their discretion. They can give it out to people in need as they see fit. And next week, I'm going to actually come with a formal invitation for you to attend. But if you are not able to attend, I will be bringing you a program book, letting you know all of the events that we have been involved with in the last twenty-five years.
Well, we appreciate you and your passion to serve others. You have been a stalwart. Well, we appreciate you and your passion to serve others. You have been a stalwart in both government accountability and ensuring that we have people that have access to the help that they need. And we appreciate you informing us of your great work today. Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Okay. And the live screening is very good. I, when I went to the parking garage, if someone hadn't been behind me, I was going to back out when I saw that ten dollars. So being able to see what's going on at the county without having to pay ten dollars to park is going to be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Appreciate you. Any other individuals here today for public comment? Tom, you coming up? Tom Crowe, our Veteran Services Director and Officer?
Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, just want to let you know at zero six thirty hours, eighty years ago tomorrow, the invasion of Normandy began. The eightieth anniversary will be tomorrow. Over four thousand, four hundred and fourteen casualties in that invasion. So I urge all the residents of Dauphin County, any World War Two vets that you see, please go up and thank them. The greatest generation. They are dying. Please, if you see a World War Two vet, thank them for their service. Reach out to a World War vet. There's one down the street, next door. Walk over, shake his hand, say thank you. Because I stand on their shoulders as a vet myself and my grandfather, who was a World War Two vet. So once again, tomorrow at zero six thirty hours in the morning, it started. And then we all know what was the outcome.
Thank you for reminding us.
Yes. And Tom, while you're here, I just want to give you accolades on the tremendous job that you and your staff are doing on behalf of the veterans here in Dauphin County. We have one of the largest veterans populations in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and we just had a Veterans Breakfast down in Lower Sweter Township. And then at the end of the year, we're going to have one in the northern end of the county. So thank you for the outreach that you're doing. I will also let folks know that when I became oversight of Veterans Affairs back in two thousand and ten and then had the opportunity to work with Mr. DeFrancesco for several years, and now you have taken over as the director. Initially, there were, I believe, two hundred thousand dollars brought in in Veterans Benefits. And you just gave me information this morning, which is pretty mind blowing. In the first six months, five months actually, of twenty twenty-four, we have exceeded five million dollars in Veterans Benefits going out to our deserved veterans here in Dauphin County who have paid the price for a great, grateful nation. And you continue to do great work. They take fifteen hundred calls a year here. They have hundreds of visitors come in, many of them unannounced. And what Mr. DeFrancesco did before and what Mr. Crowe are doing now is they don't turn anyone away. And that's remarkable, even you stay after hours to meet with our veterans. So thank you for bringing that information to us and thank you for the great work that you and your staff are doing on behalf of the residents of the county.
Just doing my job.
Mr. Gray, and just one quick point on that. And I'm not going to talk about, you know, how I feel about this issue, but for those veterans or their wives, spouses, or their husbands who have served, who have earned these benefits. Now, if it wasn't for my father's benefits, my mom wouldn't be able to survive right now, quite frankly. And for those families who went through this, Tom's job is to be able to ensure that you receive the benefits that have been earned through your service. And to ensure that we do that, Tom will go the extra mile to, you know, make sure that those benefits will be a part of your future and ensuring that you have the level of safety that this, you know, sometimes this nation does not provide. Veterans should be fully supported based upon their service and their debt they pay to this country. So thank you, Tom, for the work that you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning. My name is Pastor Harold Harris. The reason I came is because of what happened last Wednesday. And it struck a something way down deep. You gentlemen represent all of us. And whether we voted for you or not, you represent all of us. And it's really critical as to how business is conducted in the public, really critical. And the reason it struck down way deep is because, as you discussed, the Greater Outdoor Show, which I've never attended. It, and I began to think about who does attend it and who's affected by it. And the impact would have been on people like my dad. My father was a, he worked in a restaurant. That's how you put food on the table. He didn't own the restaurant. He was in the kitchen. Without customers, there's no food on the table. And he worked in a couple of restaurants because he needed to work two jobs in order to put food on the table. If we're going to examine what we've done in the past and even look at where we're going in the future, it's critical that we don't have a repeat of what happened in twenty thirteen where the Greater Outdoor Show was canceled for a year. You cancel, if there's any setback or any cancellation of anything, and everybody's talking about money, not having enough money. You get eighty million dollars, which could go away like that. And that impacts people who don't are not middle class. They struggle. But because my parents struggled, I ended up with a law degree. My sister ended up with head of nursing in San Francisco. I'm just sharing with you is that these are small people who don't go to any meetings because they're too damn tired to come to a meeting. And they can't come to a meeting at ten o'clock in the morning on a Wednesday. They're not going to watch it on stream. They're working, struggling to put money in their children's struggling to put bread on the table. If we're going to make changes in anything that we do in this county, please look at the impact. And the protocols were set up in twenty thirteen so that there wouldn't be any further cancellation. COVID changed those rules, but if you're going to make changes, at least have protocols in place and make sure the protocols work. Because if we attack a process, where's the substitute? Where's the replacement? And people like my father couldn't wait a year for it to come back. Get bills to pay a mortgage to pay. So he came home at five o'clock, laid out on the kitchen floor and went back to his second job at seven. Same work, back bacon work, but he did it. He did it because that's what men do. They provide and protect. So I'm asking this body to please examine and how are you going to conduct your business? Please understand whatever you do and say can impact upon little people who are not going to be here to protest, but they're going to be affected. And the protocols that were put in place even for this Greater Outdoor Show, make sure the protocols are still in place. If you're going to replace it, then the vendor, fine, that's up to you. That's what we hired you to do, to look at, bring out the best system. But where's the replacement? How's it going to impact upon small people? And as a person of color in living in this city, the unemployment rate for people who look like me is twice the norm. So if the county catches a cold, we make it pneumonia in terms of its finances. How you handle your finances is critical. How you make your decisions is critical. If there's a legal problem, then the solicitor needs to address it. But I'm asking you if you would please continue the the process of finding ways to make things work. Because at the end of the day, we trust you, all of you, to make the right decision for us. That's why we put you there. That's why we elected you. And that's why you represent all of us, whether we voted for you or not. But the impact is so vitally critical. I want to thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor Harris. Miss Bennett?
Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, gentlemen. I'm here today because I was here on April twenty-fourth. And I made a request along with one of my committee people. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Sigma Theta Sorority, where I am the social action chair. And we are having another youth symposium. And we made a request for support from you. And since we have not heard from you, I'm here today to ask for a status update on where our request is.
Certainly, we'll find that out following the meeting. I was assuming that we had moved that forward. I thought it had the support of all three members of our board. And we will certainly get back to you on that particular matter.
And I appreciate that because we want to make sure that we get moving in terms of putting everything in place because of the issues that we're having addressed for the young people dealing with gun violence, human trafficking, and we added my mental health matters because some of the kids said their mental health matters. And so we want to make sure this takes place. And Commissioner Douglas, we did receive a phone call from your office asking that we make sure that you get the information so that you can be present at that event. But we have not heard anything on our monetary.
You've got my commitment to follow up and we'll get back to you through the chief clerk's office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very much.
Any additional comment? All right, we will, we will go into retirement board. What is it, eleven ten? We'll go there at eleven fifteen today. At this point, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
Moved by Commissioner Preece, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.